Good evening, bonsoir. Bienvenue à la réunion plénière du 6 novembre. Welcome to the committee of a hall on November 6. Ms. Parker, do we have any declaration of conflict of interest?
There were no conflicts of interest declared.
All right, so we do have a presentation for the breakfast program and hot meal fundraiser dans le vide fonds pour programme de déjeuner et repas chaud par Michel Doucet. Monsieur Doucet, vous avez le micro?
Oh yeah. Bonjour tout le monde. Hello everybody. First of all, thank you for having me here. The reason I'm here is that on October 5th, I was getting back, or 6th, sorry. I got back on vacation with my wife and I was at the Toronto airport and I get a call. This gentleman called me, he says, listen, I'm trying to get something back in Bathurst and it hasn't been there for many years. And I said, what is it? And he said, it's the Legends Tour. And I went, okay, I played in that a few years back. I don't know when, I can't remember, but I did. And I said, yes, I'm interested. So what does it, what do I have to do? So he said, well, send me all the information. When I get back home, I'll look at it. So of course, my head started thinking, what am I going to do? And then, of course, by the time I got home, I said, I know what I'm doing. So Monday morning, I went to nine schools, French and English, and I asked them a question. I said, I have a plan. I'm going to bring the Legends to Bathurst, but I need you guys to say, yes, you want to get involved and you want to sell tickets. And they said, oh, what do you mean? They said, well, if you guys sell the tickets, we promote the game and if I go out and get sponsors for it, we can make some money for all the schools because I know there's a need for the breakfast program and the hot meals in the schools. French and English in 15 schools in the area. I didn't include Beldun at first, but I've come to find out that Beldun could probably be involved in the same program. So there's 15 schools in the area, nine French, seven, six English. So I said, everybody was in game, so I called the guy up and I said, I'm game, I'll find some sponsors and the schools will get involved and work and help themselves. And they're excited, they're already started at it, they're going very well. And I said, I need some help. I need to find some people to help me find some way to get some money to, it's not a cheap event. It costs $25,000 to bring them in. And that's not including other little things like, you know, paying the rank and paying the staff or the rank and doing those things. So I need money to do this. So I said, I went out and I talked to a few people, I've got some sponsors on the go already, I probably have about $7,000 picked up already, I need more. So that's one of the reasons I'm here today. And the schools are youth. They are our future. Okay? Stop and think about it. We need to keep them in good shape and healthy and eating in schools. And we don't know who's going to come out and be number one, number two students, so we have to help them all the way through. So that's one of the reasons I'm here today, to ask you if you can help me. And I'm looking honestly, $12,000 to $15,000. I'm sure it's coming close to the end of the year and I've reached out to a few other people, I'm still waiting to hear, but all the money that we're going to raise is going to be going to pay for the kids in the schools. I want them to, like if all the schools have a minimum of 125 tickets now, if they sell it, that's pretty much $2,000 each, okay? There's going to be more because they have more opportunity. There's other tickets that I'm going to be selling, which are going to be in between periods, they can go visit. Only 30 people between the periods and those will be $50 tickets, but it includes the game to get into the game. So there, they go sit down, sit down with the players in the dressing room. And then after that, after the game is done, there's a meet and greet upstairs in the lounge and there's only 100 tickets sold and those are $100 each. This is going to help me, hopefully, if I do raise more money than I need, this will all go to the kids. Everything is going towards these kids as long as we can pay the event and do that. So as I'm saying, I'm looking for your help. And I know Bathurst has nine schools in the air here compared, you know, and I think you guys can help me out.
All right. Deputy Mayor Anderson?
Thank you, Your Worship. I wish that you, I would have known about this before because I'm the one that brought them in, the alumni team, and that's when you played?
Yeah.
I had brought them in three different occasions. And it's funny because the gentleman that I know you're dealing with tried to contact me a few weeks ago and I just honestly forgot to get in touch with him. So I should have clued in. It's not an easy venture.
No.
I know that. And I'm surprised, you had, did you have to give them the 25 grand upfront?
Not yet.
Okay, good. There's other ways to work it.
Yep.
So we can discuss that afterwards because there's other ways to work it. How much are the tickets being sold for, like the regular tickets?
$15.
Okay, they dropped the price there, okay.
I did that.
Because, yeah, it was higher than that before.
He was saying you should sell them for 20.
$20, send it to 100.
I said, no, I'm going to do it for 15. I want to, I want to make as many people go to these games, the more we can get in, the more people we can sell. It's surprising, but it's, that $5 less a ticket can make a difference.
And is it the same structure where you need to go find people to pay 500 bucks to play?
I find players. I've got a team. I have, actually, it's on a Wednesday night and we, I have a team that's playing Wednesday night. So that night, I have, I have girls that play with us. So I have a girls line that's going to play against them. I have, I say middle age, but actually 30 to 40, 30 to 35-year-olds and then old timers playing against them. I have players that are going to play with them and I've told them, find a sponsor and then I'll consider that as your entry fee or get, and I don't have the team totally picked because I had some cancellations on the weekend, so I have to get some new players.
And is it $500 to play?
It's 300 or 500 with selling some tickets. 300 straight or 500 and sell some tickets too. And then if they...
I'd like to sit down with you and just...
Yeah, sure.
Just to let you know like how I had it organized with him.
Mm-hmm.
Because I wouldn't, because at the time, I was president of minor hockey and I was not going to commit $25,000 of minor hockey money. Do you know what I mean? For something that wasn't a sure thing. So there's, I worked other angles, so I would certainly sit down with you and let you know...
He is very open though.
Oh, he is.
I've noticed that, like he's...
He is.
He's got Fredericton, Buckdush, Hamilton and us, and I think there's another place that he has...
They do the circuit and then when they're in town, and he does, he does a good job because when the players get to town and they have downtime, they'll typically either go to a school or they'll go to one of the First Nations.
Yep.
And, you know, have like a meet and greet there type of deal. So I mean, but yeah, I'd like to just have a chat with you and just let you know how I work things with him.
Sure, I'd love it. Yeah.
Perfect. All right. Counselor Burnett?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. What's left in our grants budget now for this sort of thing, November or December, just coming around the corner?
Ms. Parker?
There's still $17,000.
$17,000.
But we do have some more requests coming up, so just keep that in mind.
We have more requests other than this. Yeah. Thank you. Thanks for your presentation. Andrew?
Thank you.
I do have a couple of questions. So you're asking 12 to 15 from Bathurst. What will you be asking Belvedere and Beldun?
I will be asking them between eight and 10.
Okay.
I have, I don't have a meeting set with them yet though. I met them on, I met on Friday and there was nobody there that could actually tell me what, but they said, come and see us next week. They have the information, they're going to call me, but I'll go see them tomorrow for sure.
Okay. And when's the game?
On November 29th, Wednesday, November 29th.
Okay. All right.
Did you all get one of these?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah. Counselor Knowles?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, that was my question, Chico, I was going to ask you that 12 to 15,000, that's in addition to the 7,000 that you've raised?
Yes.
That's the ask for Bathurst?
Yeah. Yeah. Now, I have more people that are going to give me some money this week, but like if I, if I raise, for example, if I raise $30,000 in sponsorship, there's an extra $5,000 that's going to help pay going to the kids. So nothing...
It would be ideal to get at least 2,000 people at the game.
Oh, I know I will.
Or more.
I know I will.
Okay, that was my question. Thank you.
All right. Well, we all know that the breakfast program is an important program. I was one of those kids as a child, so it is very important. So, all right, we have your request and we will definitely get back to you sooner than later.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to give those over to the mic. So we are moving over to policy review. So 3.1 P 2023-6 Workplace Diversity Equity Inclusion and Belonging Policy. Mr. Pedigree?
Thank you, Worship. This is in follow-up, it's at HR policy. Fitzwell, part of the next progression in our policies for employees and the public we deal with with regards to meeting our values with our corporation. So this is in the next step of policies that we would need to include as part of our policies for our employees and for the public and committees and contractors and staff that we work with, so.
All right. Does counsel have any questions on that policy? Everybody had an opportunity to review, okay? Counselor Branch?
I'm just kind of curious, how have we hired and promoted in the past?
Pardon me, sir?
How have we hired and promoted people in the past?
We, how have we hired, like through our HR policies? Yeah, this is, I guess, a different policy, this is with regards to work and how we deal with it as well, not just in the hiring policy, but we do have some hiring policies with regards to how we hire. Is that what you mean?
No, I guess where I'm going, like have we hired based on merit? Have we hired the best person for the job or...?
For sure, yeah. I guess we have qualifications, we post out the job description based on the qualifications. Those that meet qualifications would be given interview opportunity and then they would be graded or marked based on the criteria of the process, so yeah.
Okay. So like I read the policy and they're all charter protected rights. So have we broken the charter, rights and freedoms anywhere, like...
No, this is just part of how we operate as corporation within our values of a city of respectful integrity and resourcefulness. This is something that we want to make sure all our staff follow, gives good definitions of what each one of those things mean, just so people are aware and make sure that it's better, there is no violation, but it's important that we continue and talk about these things that everyone is aware.
Mr. Pedigree, could it be because our whole policy is just not detailed enough? That's why we've decided to reinvent that one?
We never had one.
Oh, we never had one in the past? Okay. All right, so we need one.
No, no, but it says, it also said in the policy that everything is covered under different policies. So I guess where I'm going with this, if it's all covered under different policies and they're all charter protected rights and we've been hiring based on merit and we haven't had any problems with that, I'm just not sure why we need this policy.
We can go through to Mr. LeBlanc.
Mr. LeBlanc?
The proposed policy goes quite a bit further than charter protected rights. There's commitments that we're looking to make to provide some training to employees on, on some of these issues, I guess, to bring some awareness, knowledge, skills to the workforce to support an inclusive workplace. So it's not, it's not just a hiring policy, it goes, it goes beyond. So we're looking at obviously training and also making sure that we have all the structures in place that, that we need to make sure that members of marginalized groups are welcome and well-included in our workforce.
I get that and I guess that's where I'm going with that, like have we not welcomed them? Have we not hired the best person for the job? And where are we going with this policy? Are we going to be implementing like quotas or I guess that's where the questions are in my mind?
We're not, we're not looking at quotas, but we're looking to make sure that we have an environment that's welcoming for members of marginalized groups in, in different sectors of the city. So we, just as, as, you know, we have some, some groups who in our workforce right now are very male dominated. We want to make the commitment that we are, they are inclusive, that we have all the tools in place and that they're structured to, to make it a welcoming environment for, for women, for, for, so it's, it's not about, it's not only about not, not breaking charter rights, it's about making, making sure that we are proactive in making our workforce a more inclusive place.
Okay, so we feel it hasn't been inclusive?
We feel we want to take proactive steps to make it better.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Deputy Mayor Anderson?
Thank you. I just have one, a couple of questions. Are we providing training to all staff, not just management, but all staff throughout the city?
Yes.
And starting when, in 2024?
We're hoping yes.
And have we budgeted for that?
Yes.
Good, great.
Conseil LeBlanc?
Merci, Madame Lammers. Ma question, c'est pas exactement qui l'a dirigé, mais je pense que c'était bien vous?
À moi?
Écoutez, vous avez été impliqué, je pense que c'est correct de dire que dans les quatre-cinq dernières années, qu'on a beaucoup plus de gens qui ont déménagé dans la région de différentes nationalités, langues, etc., qui auraient changé, si tu veux, le portrait social de la région. Moi, je vois ça comme on se prépare, c'est proactive. Il y avait pas mal juste une sorte de personnes qu'on pouvait engager, dix ans passés. Là, c'est différent, il faut se préparer à l'avance. Est-ce que c'est le même, ce que je vois bien, qu'est-ce que vous êtes après de faire?
Oui. Moi, je pense que c'est une belle initiative que les nouveaux arrivants, peu importe qu'ils arrivent, que ce soit une femme, de différents pays, qu'ils arrivent dans la région, qui savent que nous sommes un employeur dont originalement ils diraient, non, non, je vois jamais appliqué là, j'aurais jamais de chance. Mais en étant, en ayant une politique en place, puis écoute, je vais vous dire que la ville, on a toujours embauché depuis, surtout depuis des années que je connais, mais, tu sais, ils ont embauché d'après les qualifications des gens. Mais on aurait le potentiel des gens qui auraient peut-être appliqué, mais qui auraient songé de peut-être pas appliquer parce qu'ils pensent, à cause de ma nationalité, à cause de la couleur de ma peau, j'aurais peut-être pas la chance. C'est d'encourager aussi les gens qui sont probablement qui ont aussi des compétences de venir appliquer si jamais qu'il y a des postes qui s'ouvrent à la ville.
Merci, c'est comme ça que je vois ça, c'est le même que de l'intérêt.
C'est la façon où moi aussi je l'avais vu là.
Merci, Madame Lammers.
Okay. All right. Any other question with this one? So we're okay to bring that next week? All right. So bear with me, I'm using my laptop here, trying to, less paper, go to the next item. 3.2 P 2023-07 Politique relative à l'utilisation des installations de l'hôtel de ville. Mr. Pedigree?
I think we worship through to our city clerk.
Ms. Parker?
Thank you, Your Worship. This policy is to replace the current policy, which is P 1997-02 Availability of City Hall Facilities Policy. Really, there was additional guidelines that were added in order to provide further guidance. We are now going to have requesters fill out a form just to standardize the process so we're able to better organize ourselves and keep track of the reservations. And also, just to make it known that reservations can be canceled if city council or staff deem that it is necessary to use the space for operational purposes.
All right. So do we have any questions? Counselor Burnett was waiting for you, I knew you had it too.
Yeah, we talked before.
Pickleball.
Pickleball tonight, thank you. I noticed that in the use of city hall, it says no, no politics, no political gatherings. What about if our MLA needs a place to make a press release or our member of parliament needs a place to make a, we used to do that in the past, let them use council chambers, let them use our boardroom to set it up and then meet here to, so that's sort of a political gathering. Is that still going to be allowed?
Mr. Pedigree?
Thank you, Worship. Normally, if the city wouldn't be involved, it would be a press release of a city event or city function, so that stuff would continue. I think it's for, when it comes to, you know, campaign or fundraising events or facilities of that sort, that's where, I'll ask Mr. LeBlanc to draw the line exactly what those, some of those are, if he had some more comments, but normally for those events, a press release or something related to a city event, I mean, that makes sense, we're part of that, it would be held at within our facility for sure.
Okay. My other question is about the boardroom. Can that be used at nighttime as well as during the day? There's custodians here in the evening. Can that be set up for people to have evening meetings or is it just during the day?
We'll go through, city clerk.
Yeah, all right. Ms. Parker?
Just due to our front doors being locked, it has to be during opening hours. If the library's open, they do stay open a little later than we do on some days, then we're able to accommodate that. But if they're closed and we're closed, unfortunately, we can't, we can't have that.
I remember meetings when council was appointed to different boards and, and that we would set up a meeting in the evening because that's when people were available. But, and as long as a counselor was there and had the keys to get in, they could have the evening boardroom. Is that still possible?
If you have keys to get in.
Yeah, absolutely. I've had a couple of meetings here where the door is locked, but I come and I wait at the front and let people in and then I lock the door behind me.
Thank you. Yeah, it's a public building and I like to see it used, you know, as much as possible.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Counselor Knowles?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That was basically my question too, where the hours change, like for, you know, there's a lot of groups like to use this place in the evening and have been using it. Would that change? So like you say, as long as you have a key to get into the building.
Yeah. I mean, the library is open during the evening as well, so, you know, like whenever the hours of the library, it can be done. And then if not, then it would be community-led or council-led based on the committee that they sit on.
Yeah. All right. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Anderson?
Just, just another point on that, like if, like I do my Coronation Park meetings here all the time, but I book the room through the city clerk first and of course, I have a key, so we have our meeting, then I lock up when we leave. So various committees that I have, we do meet here, but we always book the space through the city clerk beforehand.
You still have it.
Yeah.
All right. We're good with that one for next week?
Yeah.
P 2023-05 Volunteer Recognition Policy. Mr. Pedigree?
Thank you, Worship. I'll ask Mr. Wilbur if he wants to give a quick summary since he's here this evening. Might as well get him to...
All right. Which mic would you like, Mr. Wilbur? Okay, all right. Okay, you're lit up.
Thank you, Your Worship. The volunteer recognition policy has simply been updated to reflect hosting an annual event. I believe the previous language in the subsequent version was to host the event on a biannual basis. So this was simply just to update the language so that we could host the event each and every year during National Volunteer Recognition Week and to be able to host an event to recognize the contributions of our volunteers within the municipality.
All right. Do we have any questions? That one is an easy one. All right. P 1989-08 Donation of a City Flag. P 1989-09 Don du Drapeau de la Ville de Bathurst. Ms. Pedigree, do I go directly to Ms. Parker?
Yes, through to Ms. Parker.
Okay. Ms. Parker?
Thank you, Your Worship. As part of our revision and cleanup of city policies, we are recommending that this policy be repealed. We did do some research in other cities and we seem to be the only one who have this. Requests for city flags can be treated by the clerk's office. If I feel that the request should be brought to members of council, it will be done so at a regular meeting.
So instead of having this have to come to council, the request will go directly to you?
Yeah.
And if you see fit, you'll, okay. Counselor Burnett?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. One time, we had some small little desk flags and the visitors, the children coming from different schools were able to get the city flag that way, some smaller ones for their classrooms, et cetera. Would that come under this policy or would we have that under promotions policy? And do we still have some of those?
I think that would come through the promotional budget that we have for marketing, not necessarily on that type of request. Mr. Pedigree? Correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, there, this is, would be a city flag for, for community groups or for non-for-profit looking for it. For some of the other stuff would be part of our items that we would produce, same as pins and other promotional items that they would request. I'm not sure what inventory we have, I'll have to confirm that, but definitely that's where the requests would be, so.
Full size legs?
Yeah, this is for the full size.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
All right. So we'll move over to municipal bylaws. 2023-09 Arrêté portant sur les procédures du Conseil Municipal de la Ville de Bathurst. Mr. Pedigree?
Thank you, Worship. Through to Mr. LeBlanc.
Monsieur LeBlanc?
Merci, Madame Lammers. Donc, à la prochaine réunion publique, il y aura, lors du jour, une proposition pour modifier l'arrêté procédural du conseil. Projet d'arrêté comprend un certain nombre de changements. Le plus important, si on veut, c'est vraiment de séparer l'arrêté procédural et le code de déontologie. Le code de déontologie est une exigence de la loi sur la gouvernance locale. Présentement, ça fait partie du même arrêté. Ça serait vraiment important de les séparer pour que le code de déontologie soit un document à part entière. On va aussi faire quelques propositions de modification au conseil. Dans les grandes lignes, on propose de modifier le nombre de réunions par mois. Présentement, on a la session de la réunion plénière, donc comme ce soir, qui a lieu, je pense, le premier, deuxième lundi du mois, puis la réunion publique le troisième lundi du mois. On va proposer de rajouter une réunion publique le premier lundi du mois, donc il y aura une réunion, il y aurait plutôt une réunion ordinaire publique le premier et troisième lundi du mois, en plus de la réunion plénière le deuxième. Puis là, je parle de lundi, mais en fait, on va aussi proposer de modifier le soir des réunions au mercredi, plutôt que le lundi. C'est simplement pour, c'est dans le mélange flow dans le déroulement de la semaine, on constate que ça peut être problématique là, par moments où c'est un petit peu plus difficile d'avoir les réunions le lundi. Juste au niveau de la préparation, il y a souvent beaucoup de choses qui vont changer au cours de la fin de semaine, puis avoir les réunions le lundi soir, c'est un petit peu plus difficile pour le flow du travail, donc le mercredi permet un petit peu plus de temps pour préparer les réunions. Il y a aussi certaines modifications qui vont être proposées là, qui sont plus d'ordre administratif, donc au niveau de formulaire à remplir et tout ça. Aussi des précisions au niveau des présentations du public. Donc, clarifier ce qui peut et ce qui ne pourrait pas faire l'objet de, de présentation devant le Conseil. Par exemple, des sujets qui font l'objet d'un appel devant un tribunal administratif ou des sujets pour lesquels il va y avoir une audience publique. On aura également une proposition pour permettre des présentations qui sont non enregistrées à l'avance. En présentement, si un membre du public veut faire une présentation, il doit s'enregistrer auprès de la grèfial la semaine précédente. Les présentations sont limitées à quinze minutes. On a constaté que dans d'autres municipalités, ils permettaient une, un forum un petit peu plus ouvert au début des réunions. Donc, on permettait deux minutes aux gens qui étaient pas inscrits à l'avance. Donc, la proposition sera également là si le Conseil veut aller dans cette direction-là. Évidemment, le Conseil aura l'occasion de, de débat de ces changements-là. Puis pour retenir les changements que, que vous souhaitez garder. Puis aussi, pour le public là, les bouches d'arrêté seront disponibles sur le site web après la première lecture à la prochaine réunion publique.
Parfait, conseiller le blanc?
Merci, Madam La Merce. Donc, si je comprends bien, Monsieur La Plante, il va y avoir une réduction des réunions week-end et une augmentation des réunions publiques. Il va nous permettre d'avoir plus de débats publics et avoir plus de transparence en tant que Conseil.
C'est l'objectif.
Ça, c'est merveilleux. Puis on va aussi avoir la chance de peut-être débattre certains petits points, comme vous avez dit, durant, avant de prendre le vote final, c'est ça? Ou est-ce que ça va être directement le vote on vote comme c'est là?
Euh, oui, absolument, le... Un arrêté nécessite trois lectures pour être adopté lors de deux différentes réunions. Donc, on passera là à la première lecture lors de la prochaine réunion, mais l'arrêté serait pas adopté avant le mois de décembre. Donc, encore un peu maintenant là d'en parler puis de faire des modifications besoin.
Je regarde des vêtements, ça me semble bien, mais certaines choses telles que, c'est vraiment m'assurer que nos citoyens vont avoir la chance de venir nous parler s'ils ont quelque chose à nous présenter. Puis des fois, ça peut arriver que c'est relativement dernière minute, on comprend l'envers de ce médaille là aussi. Je veux juste m'assurer, ça fait que ça, c'est superbe, merci beaucoup, Monsieur La, La Plante. Merci, Madam La Merce.
One of the things I can say is that when I was running my campaign, one of the things that people were saying is that they felt that we were not transparent enough. And having all public meeting and only going to in-camera when, you know, we are doing land legal is the way to go. I've went over everything. The only portion where I believe I am very, I'm not sure, is to allow someone to come in and have two minutes. I'm sorry, there's no way someone's gonna have something to say two minutes. And I believe that it all opens the door to have someone come in here and say something where we don't have an opportunity to speak up. We may not know the file. And I think there's, especially that we're going to have three public meetings, there is lots of opportunity for someone to go through Ms. Parker and do the request for them to come and speak to us. And at least we know what the subject, and then we can be better prepared to help and serve that person. Counselor Burnett?
Uh, thanks, Madam Mayor, I agree with you a hundred percent on that one. We, uh, have, uh, had many presentations to council where council needed the documentation beforehand in order to understand what was going to come to the meeting and better prepare us to say, well, we need to go to this budget, that budget, whatever. But if somebody just comes in off the cuff and, uh, and talking to other counselors in my past, uh, with, with different councils around province and here, that i- if you get a few radicals, uh, they'll be the ones that are at every meeting. And they'll be the ones that come for the two minutes and turn it into fifteen or twenty and sort of capture the meeting. So I think it's important to have the, uh, city clerk involved, make the, uh, make the proper paperwork available and then have them come in and make the presentation. The Wednesday meetings, I'm not sure about. It doesn't bother me, I'm retired, so I have lots of time to read what's gonna, gonna happen like today with all the policies that we've had on the agenda tonight. There was a lot of reading, you know, to get, get, uh, ready for this evening. And I had the weekend to do that as well. What about those at work, uh, you know, the, when, when would the material arrive to us? Because it doesn't come on Monday and you gotta be ready for Wednesday, that only gives you Tuesday. Whereas if you have it on Friday or you have it on Thursday, then you have three or four days in order to look at it and then maybe phone some people and give some, put some questions out there. So is there enough time really for council to be ready for the Wednesday night meeting?
Ms. Parker?
So that's not going to change. Um, everything is still expected to be in by Wednesday before noon in order for me to be able to prepare the agenda, have it out, ready, uh, to all counselors, all, uh, department heads by Thursday.
That will not change, it's just the meeting will be following Wednesday, so it gives you more time.
That's not going to change.
That will not change. So that gives council time to, the weekend to, to do their research and homework, et cetera, uh, as they, as they do now? Okay, that's good. I'm, either day, Monday or Wednesday?
Yeah. Deputy Mayor Anderson?
We've been doing, like, this is just basically formality because we've been doing, um, only one in-camera meeting a month. And we've been having all of our meetings public for the last two or three months. So, for me, this is just a formality because we've been do- we've been doing that practice, which I think is great as well. As for the two minutes prior, I'm against that. It's not that I don't want people to be able to voice their opinions or bring up issues that they have. But for me, it's opening a can of worms, just to have somebody show, show up. They could be upset about something, what have you, and I just, um, I, I just think that we're opening a can of worms by allowing people to come in for two minutes prior. I mean, and then where does it stop? Like, you know what I mean? Like, and I don't believe two minutes is gonna be two minutes, it's gonna be twenty minutes and then you might have a lineup of people wanting their two minutes.
I, I totally agree, and, I mean, I'll use this as an example. So, um, I was gone to Fredericton on the weekend, I was really busy before I left for the weekend. And media tried to reach me Saturday morning while I was in my conference, women in business. And I checked my message and they said, "We would like to talk to you about Paul." And I'm like, "Who's Paul? What's going on?" So I had no clue, right? So I was like, "I can't talk to that person, I don't even know, what, what are they talking about?" So I contacted our communications manager and he goes, "Go on Facebook on your break." Well, welcome to Bathurst, Paul! But, you know, it was beautiful to see that everybody joined and it was all over Facebook. You may, I don't know if you heard about this, Deputy Anderson, no?
No, I don't do Facebook, so I have no idea who Paul is.
Home Hardware had said something about Paul, like, "Your snowblowers ready?" or something as marketing. I'm not sure the reason behind it. But then everybody starts saying, "Well, Paul, come pick up your kids at school, welcome to Bathurst, Paul." Everybody joined.
Like a Karen?
Yes, like a Karen but a Paul. But everybody was welcoming Paul to the region. And it was in every business, it was everywhere. And it was just, it was beautiful to see so many people in attraction on Facebook, just on the one that the city posted. Was amazing, but again, if I would have did that interview, I would have looked stupid because I was so busy, I was not on social media. I had no clue what was happening. So, and this is just a small example where I think as, as council and mayor, we need to prepare ourselves to make sure that we can offer proper answers and have the right departments around the table if someone comes in with a question. That if we know that it comes with the engineering department, we can have someone from the engineering department with us. Yeah. But yeah, I had no clue. Counselor Willett?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I'm also against the, the two minutes for a meeting at the beginning, it'll just disturb a lot of, of the process or a lot of the meeting. So are we just talking about going three meetings a month? So two public meetings and one?
No, three, three public meetings.
Three public meetings?
They're all public meeting, and if we need to add an in-camera, if we have to do, for example, land legal, uh, we would add to that, right, Mr. Pedigro?
Yes, and I mean, you also have the option, depending on it, you could have a short one after or you could modify based on the, the items.
Yeah, because we can actually go on in-camera for a, a particular item that we need to talk to, but not have to have a whole meeting in.
And as far as the Monday or the Wednesday, like, uh, Counselor Burnett, it doesn't matter to me. But I'll say that on Mondays, how many times do we have to change a meeting? Because there's a holiday on the Monday, I don't know, I think there's maybe seven this year or eight? So we got seven or eight meetings that have to be changed from Monday to Tuesday or Wednesday or whatever.
There is a lot of stats, holiday that falls on the Monday, this, in 2024. So for me, Wednesday, I think would be, I'd be okay with certainly with a Wednesday.
And with the, with our staff going on the new shift, it also means that some people are not here on Monday and some people aren't here on Friday, so...
Yeah, we would still get our documentation on time.
Everybody's here on Wednesday.
Yeah, yes. Yeah. Okay, so any other questions on this one? We're fine to bring that next week, except Monsieur La Plante. I just want to feel with the two-minute, people can come at the last minute. Are we in agreeance on that one, so we can have it removed? Yes, that's the only thing that we would want.
And there's always, uh, again, the possibility of bringing amendments, uh, at the, whether at the next meeting or in December, there is always, there is still time for, uh, for debate on this.
Yeah, there's more time, okay. Okay, oh, let me go back to... Oh, sorry, Counselor Burnett?
I think, why, why do we, oops?
Oh, yeah, okay, there you go, all right, there you got the mic.
Why, why do we need further debate on it when we just decided no?
Monsieur La Plante?
Uh, I mean, there's still time to make amendments on other items of the bylaw if there's more debate to be had.
We still have time to review it.
Okay, I was just looking at that one item. Cool.
All right. Twenty twenty-three dash zero eight, a bylaw establishing a code of conduct for elected officials. Mr. Pedigro?
Thank you, worship, through to Mr. La Plante as well.
Monsieur La Plante?
Merci, Madam La Merce. Donc, j'en ai parlé un petit peu brièvement en parlant de l'arrêté procédural. Présentement, le code de déontologie qu'on a pour les membres du Conseil est inclus dans l'arrêté procédural. C'est maintenant une exigence de la loi sur la gouvernance locale, d'avoir un arrêté standalone, comme on dit là, un arrêté à part entière pour le code de déontologie. Donc, on change vraiment très très peu là. L'objectif, c'est juste d'avoir un arrêté à part entière qui traite de code, du code de déontologie. Donc, ce que ça, ça contient là, c'est vraiment des, hum, des dispositions sur le comportement des réunions vers leurs collègues, les employés, les résidents, l'utilisation que les membres, euh, du Conseil peuvent faire des biens, des ressources, des services la municipalité, l'utilisation des moyens de communication, médias sociaux. Puis, c'est déjà des choses qui sont en place dans le code de déontologie, on veut vraiment faire un document, euh, en soi. Puis, encore une fois, c'est une exigence dans la loi sur la gouvernance locale d'avoir ça pour le Conseil.
Parfait, do we have any questions? I think that one is a no-brainer, we're good with that one, okay? We're gonna move over to twenty eighteen dash zero two, transient traders, peddlers, vendors and mobile trunk bylaw. Mr. Pedigro?
Thank you, worship, through to our city clerk, Ms. Parker.
Ms. Parker?
Thank you, your worship. So we're basically seeking direction to make some amendments in this bylaw. Just in order to, uh, operationally improve the permit process, um, with doing this for the past couple of years, um, we've noticed a few things. Some of the high-level things would be, uh, permits should not be required for all vendors that fall under one sole event. So, for example, hospitality days, I think I did about fifty permits, um, which does take a lot of time and it's a lot of documentation for, uh, to collect. Um, this would be at the exception of food vendors as they do take a di- different documents. Clarification on what documents should be required. There's a few things in having, um, some conversations with the, uh, food inspector that could be better clarified on the bylaw. New forms created in order to encompass all information required or information that is needed. And clarification needed for miscellaneous, miscellaneous sections, sorry. New form, uh, permits should be created, location designations, uh, just things like that. And then looking to you to see if there's any other modifications or any additions that you believe should be added to this. And if you're okay with what's being put forward, if we can go ahead and proceed with starting the changes and we would bring it back to another committee of the whole with the bylaw, with the highlighted changes that we are recommending.
Counselor Burnett?
Uh, thanks, Madam Mayor. Did we run any of this by the business community? For example, I, I really like the food trucks, I really like seeing them all over the city and the happiness that goes with them when people are at them. At one time, though, it was like, say, if you put a food truck outside of a restaurant, uh, that was sort of a no-no. Can they, can that still happen now? Can you have, uh, foods outside of a food establishment? And the other part is like, uh, some transient traders would come in with a product that is sold, say, by, uh, a local, uh, business that's, you know, paying taxes, uh, all year round and, uh, has employees all year round? And then somebody comes in and rents a storefront that's empty and sells the same product. You know, can that still happen or should the business community be involved in looking at this before we pass it?
So right now, the bylaw does say that, um, in order for them to be on a private land, they need permission, written permission given to us from that person. So that would be at the discretion of...
The restaurant.
Whatever place they are located. And if it comes to our property, uh, the only place that they do have permission is the causeway.
Okay, and what about storefronts where somebody, like, I'll say leather jackets, somebody sells all kinds of coats in their stores and then all of a sudden, somebody comes in with a big deal and, uh, puts it on for a week or two, does that still allow?
Ms. Parker, if I can just add to this, if someone decides to rent something at the Bathurst Mall for two weeks, they're renting at the Bathurst Mall, they're not asking permission from the city, they're paying Bathurst Mall. We can't stop them.
Oh, okay.
That's not, that's completely different. That's them paying Bathurst Mall to, for that space. It's not, you know, it's, yeah, that's completely, we can't stop them from renting at the Bathurst Mall.
There was turmoil over that in the past, that's why I asked.
Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Knowles?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, are we looking at changing any of the rates we currently charge? Is it adequate or should we look at that? Has that been considered or...
It wasn't something that we had looked into, but it, we can analyze it.
Has, has it changed in recent years, the numbers we charge?
We changed it a couple of years ago.
That's probably in twenty-one?
Twenty twenty-one, I think, that's prior to you being here, Ms. Parker, yeah, we did some changes, right, Mr. Pedigro? We did some changes on the rates with past council.
I can't remember the exact rate, but there has been some recent changes.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Counselor Willett?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, if I understand right, it's just, we're just trying to cut out a lot of red tape, a lot of... The, the, to smooth out the, the applications, to make it easier for people to get their permits and...
Easier in a sense that they'll know what documents they need to provide.
Yes.
Um, there's a lot of confusion on the way that it's written, where we're going, it's a lot of back and forth. Um, and there's a lot of issues when it's one person collecting for an entire festival, for example. Again, a lot of back and forth trying to get that.
Okay.
I'll use hospitality days, when the Multicultural Association partnered up with hospitality days for, um, the Saturday afternoon, everybody that had a table had to come and get a permit when it was under our umbrella and that, we had talked about that, right? Unless they are selling food and there's certain, but if you wanna be selling jewelry at the table around or kid stuff, they still had to come and get a permit. Counselor Hondas?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I was just gonna point that out because it's a, I know when you have a food vendor, you have to have a license to sell food, you have to have a college thing saying you handle food. So I think when the food comes to that, you have to kind of follow the rules. But if somebody's selling jewelry and stuff, I think we could be a little bit more lenient. But I think it's nice to know for us who's here, though. I think in a lot of times, we were just trying to get a number of how many people are around. Like, I do understand what, uh, Counsel Burnett said earlier, because I have a brother-in-law that has a Dixie Lee not far and then, uh, every year, I had, I got conversations at about that, that food truck that's at the, right in front of, yeah, around there. So, uh, we just gotta be careful of that too, because like you said, people do have rent and then they do have taxes to pay it and so it's not fun to have another restaurant right in front of you there, so... in front of you there, so that's the only thing I'd say.
All right. So we go to grants and sponsorships. So Bathurst Minor Hockey, Mr. Pedigree?
Thank you, worship, we're gonna go right through to Ms. Parker.
Ms. Parker?
So the Bathurst Minor Hockey are requesting a sponsorship this year. Their packages vary from two hundred dollars to twelve hundred, which would have been included in the packages that were sent last week. And I'm just looking for Council's direction on how they would like to proceed with this. If you would like to go ahead, I'll need an amount, and we'll bring it to next public meeting.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Anderson?
Thank you, your worship. We had a request for Bathurst Minor Hockey, was it earlier in the year, earlier this year, for sponsorship? I was against the sponsorship at that time. I think at that point, we were sponsoring a team or a tournament or something, right?
It was a tournament.
It was a tournament. And I was against it at that time, specifically because we already sponsor minor hockey with the reduced rate, rental rate that I think we're at. Mr. Wilbur can correct me if I'm wrong. I think we're at, what, one fifteen or one eighteen an hour versus what's, what's regular ice? Somebody wants, if I want to go rent the rink, what is it gonna cost me? Hundred and what?
Currently, our prime time rates, just pulling them up here now, just to confirm proper number, prime time rate for a general user group would be a hundred and ninety dollars per hour. Whereas a specialty group, which minor hockey would be included within, has a flat rate regardless of time at one hundred and twenty dollars per hour. So it'd be a savings of seventy per hour.
Seventy dollars an hour. So for me, and it's nothing against Bathurst Minor Hockey, I adore the association, but we subsidize them quite a bit as it is. So I would not be for giving more money.
All right, so we'll go around to get feedback from Council, Conseil Le Bla.
Merci, Madame La Meresse. Ryan, les frais pour le hockey mineur s'augmentaient de combien dans les trois dernières années?
Merci, je crois la saison passée, ça a été cent dix par heure, donc cette année, on a augmenté les prix par dix cas à l'heure.
Et puis, ils prennent combien d'heures dans une saison, environ?
Oh, ça, je suis pas certaine à l'humain, la montée d'heures tout de suite, mais certainement, je préfère les démarches.
Quand on prend un équipe qui fait deux pratiques par semaine pendant quoi, huit mois, environ? Huit mois la saison, neuf mois?
Ben, c'est peut-être plus proche à six mois vraiment pour la saison.
Six mois, vraiment, okay. Ça va être avec deux pratiques par semaine, deux fois six, deux fois vingt-cinq, cinq ans. On parle d'une augmentation de cinq cents dollars, cinq, six cents dollars par équipe, environ. Okay. On sait, je suis pas, pas vendu pour les aider en tout, la raison, Madame La Meresse, c'est parce que, je sais qu'il y a moins d'enfants qui sont inscrits avant, et en plus de misère. Si chaque équipe a plein cinq, six cent pièces de plus, ça revient beaucoup d'argent pour le hockey mineur. Je sais qu'on y, on y en donne déjà beaucoup, mais on en donne beaucoup à d'autres organismes aussi à profit, tels que le Titan Academy Bathurst, que je rien compte en pensant, parce qu'ils amènent beaucoup à la région aussi. Mais me semble que supporter les jeunes de la région, c'est de la misère à pauvres qui ont donné quelque chose. Je suis pas déterminé sur le prix, mais j'aimerais bien pour commander un petit quelque chose, moi personnellement.
Avez-vous une idée de qu'est-ce que vous aimeriez donner?
Qu'est-ce qu'il y a comme package encore? Je sais que c'est de deux à douze là, mais.
Deux cents à douze cents.
Cent mais douze cents, c'est pas.
Ah, sorry.
On a tu un mille?
Oh, yeah, there's a two hundred, there's a six hundred for silver, there's twelve hundred for gold, six hundred for silver, and two hundred for bronze. Yeah, I don't want to move my screen again, because I have to move all the way back up.
Moi, personnellement, zéro douze.
Okay. Council Burnett?
I would be in agreement with a thousand, but I'd like to know where it's going to go. Is it gonna go into general funds, or is it gonna go in to help keep some, some kids in hockey? For example, are there still programs like Jump Start that help kids to get in? And would we be not better off helping that type of program in order to get more kids in, rather than just giving, giving it to the general fund?
Yeah, there is still jumps, Jump Start happening at the moment. I mean, how active and how much do they qualify? I'm not too sure, but there is.
Is there any other programs other than Jump Start to get kids a hand to get in? Because it's, it's an expensive sport.
It is.
Yeah.
Mr. Pedigree, do you know of any details that?
We'll go through to Mr. Wilber.
Mr. Wilber?
The only one that I am aware of offhand, there's a similar program to Jump Start, which is, I believe, administered by Sport NB, which is Kidsport, which similarly is a funding program that goes towards both equipment and registration fees for, for low-income families.
Well, I'd support Counselor Le Bla.
Okay. Council Legacy?
Thank you, Madame Mayor. I was just wondering if we could go over all the different requests and if we gave any amounts to them in the previous year, just as a comparison? And I believe you had mentioned we still have seventeen thousand left, just to confirm that.
We can certainly do that, and then we'll go back to every one of them. All right. So we also have volleyball Blue Panther. Ms. Parker?
The Place des Jeunes girls volleyball team are seeking funds for their twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four year. They will be taking part in tournaments at various locations throughout the province, and their objection, objective at the end of the season is to be representing for the Chaleur team at J de l'Acadie. So this is basically based on what they wrote in order to help the girls with the fees in order to be on the team and, and the jerseys and things like that. So that's the request there. I would have to pull up the previous years. I know last year, I don't believe they had applied for anything. And as Deputy Mayor Anderson, just going back to the first, the minor hockey, they did make a request for a tournament, and that was in March.
Five hundred?
Five hundred.
Last year?
The minor hockey?
Yeah. Did they make a request?
Last year?
They made a request last year. Unfortunately, it wasn't me, the clerk at the time, so I don't have the exact details, but I know that they did not receive anything.
All right, so Counselor Burnett?
Thanks, Madame Mayor. I would like to support the volleyball group. We support hockey a lot, and we support some other ones, so why not support volleyball? Six hundred dollars or five hundred or whatever, just to, you know, to show that we do support this type of activity.
We'll keep going through. The only thing I will say is that this, you're supporting an actual team. Then every other team member is gonna come forward and they're gonna want us to help them financially. Because minor hockey is all the children together as a group. They're, you're, you're sponsoring just a team for ESN. Brace yourself for Superior to come in, for Bathurst High School to come in, everybody's gonna come in because they're gonna be going on tournaments, or they're gonna be running for, because this is more individual. Again, the decision belongs to you, but I just want to bring a few pointers. Council Hondas?
Thank you, Madame Mayor. Don't we have a grants committee that's supposed to be taking care of all this? At one point, we did. I don't know, like, because we do have other people that are asking for money there that that's gonna be here. So we had a grants committee, I think Michael, you, like, Mr. Willet, you were on it that last year, Mr. Knowles, I think you were. Yeah, so that wouldn't fall under their umbrella?
It would. I think it's because we're getting close to the end of the year.
And the request came in for twenty twenty-three, they didn't specify twenty twenty-four.
Yeah, because there's probably others out there that we don't know about that usually go through the grants committee, because usually we got a stack of papers about, you know, sixty.
And your request has to go through Ms. Parker, and Ms. Parker provides it to the committee.
Okay. Well, that's just my point, and then this is a committee issue, that I think the committee should take care of this, but.
Counsel Willet?
Thank you, Madame Mayor. Yeah, if we, we start giving it individual teams, it's gonna be, we're gonna flood it. You know, like Badu's Minor Hockey, it's, it's a Knowle association, but to start giving to different teams, we're just gonna be flooded full-time. I think it's, it's up to the kids to go out and fundraise for their team, that's the way it was before, so I don't know what else would have changed for the kids to go out and fundraise for their, for their travel and for their own teams and that, to, to participate in school sports. So I, I'd be very weary on, on starting that, that process of giving to individual teams. I definitely don't agree with that.
Okay. Counselor Knowles?
Thank you, Madame Mayor. Yeah, I think when we get into sponsoring individual teams, they're all worthy of getting a donation, but when we get into that, we're picking winners and losers, and we don't really want to get into that. Not that we don't support any of them, it's just, I don't think that's the way to go, supporting individual teams. No disrespect to any of the requests.
Okay. We'll move on to twenty twenty-three poppy campaign. Ms. Parker?
So I'm sure you're all aware, it is the twenty twenty-three conducting, the Legion are conducting their poppy campaign. This is money to assist and support veterans and their families in the Chaleur region. Last year, there was a donation of five hundred dollars for this campaign, and we're looking to see if you'd like to do that again this year.
All right, so we have five hundred dollars that they're requesting.
They're not requesting, they, they didn't put an amount, but that is what we gave last year.
That's what we gave last year. Council, have any objections with that one? Okay, and then we'll move on to the breakfast program and hot meals that we just received as a request.
Okay, so Mr. Doucet gave you the presentation for this, now it's to have the discussion to see what, how Council would like to proceed.
Conseil Le Bla?
Merci, Madame La Meresse. Je t'ai, je t'aurais la présentation. Je veux vraiment aider, trouver le montant et où ça nous laisse plus de place pour aider d'autres organismes. Si, ça serait-tu insultant de donner moins que demander? Ce que vous cherriez, je verrai comme, là, dix-sept mille enlève, quoi, deux, trois mille, là, on vient de, de, on parlait probablement au moins, au moins deux mille. Il faudrait rester au moins sept mille, me semble, pour les autres organismes aussi qui vont venir nous demander. Je verrai cinq, six mille qu'on pourrait offrir peut-être. Je sais pas si, je suis prêt à écouter les autres, me semble, c'est, mais, que vous avez.
Okay. Counsel Willet?
Thank you, Madame Mayor. I, I'm looking at this and I'm wondering how much of a tourism thing this also turns out to be? Because we got ex-NHL players coming to play a game in Bathurst. It's gonna, you know, bring up a lot of talk, a lot of play and that, so I'm just wondering if that would be, fall into our tourism section of it.
Might be an option.
And so, we can probably take it out of there. Because we are November, so.
Okay. Conseil Le Bla?
Excuse-moi, j'ai juste une autre question, je m'arrête dessus encore. C'est parce que j'y crois au programme pour les enfants. Je fais que je donne l'argent là, puis qu'il y a une partie qui va se rendre aux enfants parce qu'on paye pour des actions NHL. Ça serait-tu pas mieux de juste prendre l'argent puis de donner ça au programme? Que je voudrais pas donner six mille pièces, puis qu'il y en a deux, deux sur qui va aux enfants, quand tu vraiment, j'aurais pu donner six mille pièces au programme, rentrer en appartement.
Oui, vous pouvez prendre le micro. Il faut leur prendre le micro parce qu'on a, il y a un public.
J'ai eu la même question aujourd'hui. Si qu'on donne, quelqu'un a dit, ben pourquoi est-ce qu'on donne pas juste deux mille? Tu recommandes les écoles? J'ai dit, ben moi, j'ai quatorze écoles ou quinze écoles. Ton deux mille va aller où? Moi, j'ai besoin d'en payer pour avoir un groupe ici. J'implique les écoles dans le programme, okay? So, ils sont là pour travailler pour eux autres même. Ils vont travailler, ils vont vendre des biens, ils vont pousser le programme, so ça coûte l'argent pour les amener ici, c'est le plus l'argent que je peux avoir là, ils vont faire ça. Si j'en ai d'extra qui vont venir, on va tout donner quoi ce qu'il y a d'extra, tout. So deux mille ici ou deux mille là, tout le monde dit la même chose, ben, c'est, okay, moi, je vais aller à BHS donner deux mille, okay? Ben, les autres écoles vont rien voir. Okay, mais il y a d'autres écoles là. Robertville, ils ont vraiment de la misère, okay? Puis, il y a des écoles, si tu gardes là, c'est le ratio, le ratio, c'est un par cinq élèves qui ont besoin de l'argent, qui ont du manger, qui ont pas mangé. That's a lot. C'est pas toutes les écoles, ben il y en a deux, deux écoles, je pense qu'ils ont dit, c'est one out of five. Don't have their breakfasts or dinners at home. That's a lot.
Puis, je vois encore ton, ton point Chico, excuse-moi de faire l'avocat du job, mais je veux juste vraiment clarifier la chose, c'est toi, tu vas prendre de l'argent puis tu vas la séparer quoi également les écoles? Parce que l'autre façon que je vois ça, c'est si, mettons, nous autres, on donnerait, on juste prendre les chiffres, on donne cinq mille, puis Beresford donne, Belbe donne cinq mille, puis Beldon donne deux mille. On prend douze mille puis on le divise à travers de quinze écoles. Bon, chaque école a sept cent cinquante chaque, à peu près, je sais pas, si j'ai fait des erreurs mathématiques, pardonnez-moi là. Là, on s'assure que les écoles ont des, ont de l'argent pour leur programme. De cette façon ici, mettons que, encore là, tant que ça coûte cinquante mille faire venir l'équipe, puis on arrive à cinquante et un mille. On a juste distribué un mille pièce à travers des quinze écoles, est-ce que ça va lui la peine?
Oui, oui, ben, c'est ça que j'ai dit au début. Moi, j'étais voir les écoles. Do you want to get involved? Voulez-vous vous impliquer? Ils ont dit oui. So ils autres vont vendre des biens pour aller à la game. So, okay, on va dire toi, t'es BHS, on va dire que Ricky est RSN. Steve est, mais vous autres là, vous allez faire la promotion pour vos écoles, okay? So tu as cent vingt-cinq biens ou cent cinquante biens, ils ont chacun une section dans l'arène là, qui est impliqué à eux autres. So en faisant ça, ils vont vendre leurs biens, section là, c'est à eux. Maintenant, moi, j'ai besoin de trouver des commandistes pour payer ça. So en faisant ça, si Robertville tourne de bord puis il vend deux cents biens, mais ces deux cents biens là, ça va à eux autres.
Okay, ça va tout à eux autres. Ça va pas pour aller à payer.
Oui. Non. Chaque école vend quoi ce qu'ils vont vendre.
Okay, c'est ça que j'avais pas compris au départ.
Okay, so de manière là, ils sont, ils sont pompés pour vendre parce que ça va à eux autres. C'est pas divisé entre le paquet.
Alors là, c'est beaucoup plus convivial, parce que moi, je pensais qu'on avait des enfants après de vendre des biens pour payer pour que Chico va faire venir une équipe d'or.
Non, 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 non.
Excuse-moi, rudimentaire au bout là.
Je l'avais pas fait comme ça. C'est, j'ai dit, moi, j'étais voir les écoles, puis on dit oui, let's get involved, puis on dit, moi, j'ai dit, c'est, je l'avais pas fait non plus, si qu'on a pas dit oui, on va pas faire des, on a pas, pour vendre des biens.
Beaucoup mieux compris, j'apprécie, Monsieur Doucet.
Counsel Hondas, you were laid up. You're welcome.
Thank you, Madame Mayor. Yeah, I just, yeah, it's one clarification that I had, I was wondering about where that money went that the school picked up, but you did answer that. So if they sell a hundred and fifty tickets at fifteen dollars, whatever that goes to the schools, that would?
Yep.
And then sponsorship that you're requesting is to pay for the team to come in?
To come in, yeah.
The twenty-five thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Before I commit to a number, I'd really like you to have a seat with Deputy Mayor Anderson to see if there's any, you know, things that you guys could work out, from her experience doing this and your experience doing what you do, I think you can come to a thing. And just for us, you know, I have to understand, it's, it's budget time, and we do have a lot of requests, so for us to commit a certain amount. But I can tell you that I sent your picture to the Kinsman Club, and you're on the docket for Thursday, so we might be able to do a little something for you there. But coming back to the city, I'd really want, you know, I want to see you go to Belbe, and I want to see you go to Beldon to see.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Just, you know, not, not that we end up paying the bill again. So we will commit, I won't commit to a number, but I will commit to support.
Yep. Trust me, I'm, I've been everywhere and I'm getting support from everybody that's, like, we have jerseys for the, the local legends and that's being paid by, uh, Day's, um, sports store. They're going to sponsor the jerseys, uh, for the local team. And, um, hotels, I've gone to the hotels and asked them what their price press could be. I thought of maybe, okay, where I, I need fourteen rooms, okay? Fourteen rooms at a hundred and fifty dollars. I said, what if I get a cottage which has two rooms in it? So I went to see Charles Roy and he said, yes, I'll give you them. So Charles Roy is going to, uh, give me the cottages, seven cottages, so I'll have them up there. Now, they're not going to be there that much because they're, they're going to get here in the afternoon, they're going to go visit some schools. Uh, I said, you're going to make sure you have French and English schools that they're going to go visit and that's what they're going to do. Probably one in Batters and one in Petter Rush or Beresford or wherever they're going to go. I've kind of got a little competition with them. Whoever sells the most tickets will get the visit from the players. So they know it, now they're going to go push their, their tickets. And I, I want to make it fun for everybody and, you know, so, and I've got players from pretty much every area that's playing on the team. So the local team, I call them the local legends, but and then we have, you know, like Chris, Chris Nolan is going to be here. I have a couple of people that are on the bench coaching with them that are local and they're excited. One's Toronto Maple Leaf fan, you know, one's a Montreal Maple Leaf fan. So they're excited about it. So it's going to be a fun event and, um, everything is falling into place really nice, but I just, we need to get some money so I can pay these guys.
Yeah, no doubt, no doubt.
And, and the schools are going to take care of their area. They're calling me now. Okay, well, who do I write the check to? I said, do I keep all the money here? Yes, keep all the money there because I gotta go pay this guy after. Ticket, ticket boutique.
Is that good, Counselor Honda? Deputy Mayor Anderson?
I'm just a little apprehensive with it being three weeks away. It's a lot to try to pull together within a three-week time period. Um.
Trust me, when he called me, he says, you've got seven weeks to do this. You think you can do it? I said, and then he said, I, I was told you could do it. I said, well, kind of make me feel like, oh, I'm going to try it. Yeah, I can do it. And, and I, I'm going on the radio, it's on the radios now. Uh, I'm going live on the radio in, in French, uh, Wednesday. Um, uh, we're really pushing it hard. And Facebook is going out and we all know social media goes, that the schools are really getting on board. Every school, they're promoting it through their programs, through the, all the school, all the, they're pushing it hard. So.
I, I certainly want it to succeed. Uh, I'm just apprehensive because I've done it three times and I don't want to burst any bubbles or be a negative Nellie. That's not where I'm coming from. But, you know, I had all the kids, my, every kid at Minor Hockey had to sell tickets. They were, it was advertised in the schools, it was in the newspaper, it was on the radio. It's all the same guys. I'm looking at the pictures and it's, it's all the same guys that I had in here three times over and, and it was a hard go. Like, I'm not going to lie, it was a hard go. The best one we did brought in nine hundred butts in the seats.
Guaranteed is over two thousand.
Well, I, I, I hope so. I, I, I hope so. Like, I, I, I really wish it well. I'm just very apprehensive just because, and then having to pay a twenty-five thousand dollar bill on top of it, like, I'm just, I'm not overly comfortable, to be very honest.
It will work.
Build it and they'll come, eh, Chico?
Eh?
Build it and they'll come, eh?
Yeah. It's going to happen. It's going to be good. I had an eighty-two-year-old goalie playing for us, but now he just conked out because he's playing music that night.
All right. Counselor Burnett?
Uh, thanks, Madam Mayor. I would like to see some support go into it. It could be a nice evening, could be a good night out for a lot of kids and a lot of people. So, uh, as Counsel LeBlanc said, five, six thousand, whatever that we can help out with, uh, I would be good for that. But the only question I have is that local colors, will they be Boston Bruins colors or Canadians colors?
Actually, uh, it's, it's, no, Toronto Maple Leaf.
Our teasing goes back a long ways, that's right. Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Well, we have four requests and I know they all came in at the same time. If, if the committee has time to meet this week, we can come back next week with your recommendation. Would you have time, the committee, to meet with these four requests and come with your recommendation? So it gives you more time to review it and be able to discuss it and come back to council? You're good with that? Okay. All right. Counselor Scary?
Um, just to, uh, you know, I remember playing quite a few years ago, uh, back when I worked at the radio station, played against Guillaud Florida and all those guys. And it was a great event. I, I remember the first year that they came, um, there was several thousand people in the stands. That was the year that they played against the police law enforcement team. That was a long time ago, yeah. Um, definitely, uh, would like to support it and again, we'll, we'll have the meeting and, and see. It'd be great if you could go to the other municipalities, like you're saying, and get their support as well. And, uh, again, I think we're all on board to support in one way or another. Um, and I think, you know, meeting with Penny would be a good idea as well, where she's done it before. And, uh, just to work some, maybe some of the little wrinkles in it that might be there, some of the things that she might know that that are not being overlooked, but just, uh, maybe sort of not at the, that top of mind, so.
Good. All right. Well, thank you. And, uh, you guys will come back with your recommendation for next Monday? Perfect.
There's no meeting?
Oh, there's no meeting? Oh, it's a holiday, the following Monday? See, that's why we're moving it to Wednesday. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, Counselor Willet?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If there is no meeting next Monday, is there a way that we can meet as a committee and bring back the recommendations and deal with all council? No? Because we're cutting it close there.
Yeah, we're cutting it closer.
We are cutting it close and, uh, she knows I have to make a deal with them to delay it and pay it and.
Yeah.
Okay. So since we don't have a meeting next Monday, we may have to talk it through this evening then. All right. Counselor LeBlanc?
Well, I was just going to say the same thing as Counselor Willet. C'est à regard où on peut se rencontrer, probablement plus tard jeudi on peut avoir une réponse, mais peut-être bien que c'est mieux de le débattre dessus.
Oui, le débat de suite parce que sinon la semaine prochaine on n'a pas de rencontre, donc on va procéder une autre semaine après ça.
Tant qu'on a le micro, va donner mon opinion dessus?
Oui.
Okay. Evidemment, grosse partie c'est Monsieur Scare, Conseiller Scary Willet. Si on donnerait sûrement cinq mille, mettons les deux autres municipalités ensemble donneraient un autre cinq mille. Ça la donnerait dix-sept mille de sponsorship déjà. Il a sept mille, il nous a dit tout à l'heure. Il restera notre huit mille à aller chercher, ça sera à lui aller le chercher.
Okay. Et le poppy, le cinq cents?
Ah, ça c'est un oui.
Correct. Okay. Volleyball, Blue Panther?
Non.
Non? Puis Batters Minor Hockey?
Moi j'ai dit oui tantôt.
Vous aviez dit douze cents?
Moi j'ai dit douze cents, mais mes collègues ont pas prouvé là.
Oui. Non, je vois avec ça que vous recommandez. Okay, I'll go to Counselor Willet because he's lit up and.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I still would like to know if we would be allowed to use, uh.
We'll look into it and if so, then, uh.
Okay, so if we can get, if we can use the, the fund, uh, tourist accommodation fund, I'd like to use five thousand, I'd say five thousand from there and five thousand from our grants committee. So that way there, we're splitting it in half with, and there's still money left in both, in both accounts.
Okay, Ms. Parker, taking notes.
As far as the Minor Hockey is concerned, yeah, I think we should give something to them this year. So I think eight hundred dollars would be, would be good. And, uh,
Two, six, two, six, six. Okay.
And definitely not for, uh, the volleyball team. I don't think we should be doing individual teams and the five hundred for the, for the Legion is, is fine.
All right. I'll start with Counselor Legacy for your thoughts on it and make your way.
Uh, I agree with Counselor Willet.
Okay, makes it easy. Counselor Scary?
I agree too. I think it's a great idea.
Okay. Counselor Knowles?
Toi aussi.
Toi aussi. Deputy Matt Anderson?
You guys are all agreeing on the same thing for all four points? I just want clarification on that.
Yeah.
Well, for me, the Minor Hockey request is a no. The volleyball is a no. Royal Canadian Legion is an absolutely. And, uh, I, I'm not comfortable with ten thousand dollars. I'm sorry, I'm just not.
Okay. So what is your suggestion?
I don't have one at this point.
Okay, now move over. Counsel Branch?
I was just kind of curious, like, um, the hourly rate went up ten dollars for Minor Hockey. I'm just curious, is that more than our cost went up or did our cost go up more than ten dollars or?
Oh, Ryan, sorry, Mr. Wilber. Oh, I have too many mics lit up. Hold on. Okay.
Thank you, Counsel Branch. Um, the increase in the tariff of fees, uh, was a reflection of the, um, upon doing a, a, I guess, a survey of other facilities across the province to make sure that their rates that we were charging were in line with other facilities. And, uh, through that research, we found that our rates were, uh, somewhat low comparatively. So it was really just to bring it up with standard rates across the province.
Okay, so it wasn't cost driven? Okay, thank you.
All right. So Counselor Hondas, your, what's your intake on Minor Hockey, Poppy, Breakfast?
Poppy for sure. I think we owe them at least five hundred bucks, if not more. Um, Minor Hockey, we do do a lot for them, but I know that, you know, um, six hundred bucks I think would be okay.
Okay.
Um, as for the, I wish we just had more time. I wish we would have this presentation a few weeks ago for the, for the hockey game. Um, I just don't want to sell ourselves short because we're going to have, you know, these are all requests that came in at the last minute. We're going to have more requests coming in. So if we start giving all the money, the accommodation levy, we're, you know, we're, we're dwindling at that there. So, um, ten thousand is a little much for me. Not to say it's not a good event. I just wish we had more time and then have more information on it. You know, we don't have the contribution from the, the other communities later, so for us, it's a lot of money. And then if they don't give anything, then we're going to be stuck paying for the whole thing again. So, um, I'm not comfortable with ten thousand dollars. I'll come, um, I'll say yes to the Poppy Fund and five, six hundred dollars is my request for Minor Hockey, but unfortunately I can't support ten thousand dollars.
Okay. Counselor Burnett?
Uh, I support the Legion for sure and, uh, Minor Hockey, I would go to twelve hundred. Uh, and the, uh, request for this evening, uh, ten is a lot. I would, uh, probably go with, uh, six on that, three and three out of both those budgets.
Okay. Conseil LeBlanc?
Merci, Madame LeBlanc. Euh, pour le hockey, je gagne ma douce, mais si c'est six cents qui est le,
Majorité?
Qui est la majorité, évidemment, je vois là. Um, le volleyball, non, j'avais dit ça tout à l'heure. Poppy, c'est sans aucun doute, d'accord avec tous les commentaires qu'il y a eu. Euh, moi, moi je suis d'accord avec le dix mille si on a peut avoir l'autre cinq mille pour la simple raison que si les quinze écoles peuvent lever, peuvent vendre cent vingt-cinq biens chaque, je pense qu'il nous a dit, vous entendez? Ça lui donne deux mille biens chaque là. Euh, c'est trente mille biens pour nourrir des enfants. Je peux pas voir, moi je vais refuser ça, ça fait que non, bon pour moi, oui, j'approuve. La même chose que Conseiller Willet, Legacy, Scary, Knowles.
Okay. Counsel Branch, would you want to give your input on it?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, it looks like we're going to be donating to Minor Hockey. I feel more comfortable with six hundred versus twelve hundred.
Okay.
For an individual team, um, I feel like the other counselors, we can't get into sponsoring individual teams. For the Poppy Campaign, for sure, guaranteed, I'd be comfortable with five hundred dollars or more. And for the breakfast program, the hockey game, I think that's a very good idea, but like some of the other counselors, I'm kind of hesitant for ten thousand dollars.
I have an idea.
I would really like to see, um, Chico talk to Deputy Mary Anderson, see what they can do and for the committee to have a conversation about that.
I do have a suggestion. If council agreed to give five thousand and then if Belle Bay matches ten thousand, we give the other five thousand through the tourism levy. So they're guaranteed to have the team paid for the twenty-five. And then Baldoun just has to cover the balance because they don't have a big population. We go five, guaranteed five, and we give the other five. If Belle Bay wants to match their eight to ten thousand dollar requests. That would, uh, in return, hopefully they cover it and then you have Baldoun paying the, the rest of the balance. You cannot speak, Mr. Doucet?
I actually think that's a good ide, I actually think that's a good idea. It's a regional initiative.
Yep.
So if our regional partners step up, I think, I think that we should move forward with it.
Yeah, because they certainly do not want to cost share on the Casey Irving, uh, facility. So at least it can cost share on an activity.
Especially when the schools are located all through the region.
Yep, because there's a lot of schools. It's not the schools all in Batters. What do you guys think of that idea?
I would.
You would support that?
Ten might be a lot.
I think it's for a good cause, you know?
You gotta look at the overall cause. It's a great initiative for sure.
Yep.
Anyway, five is, I'd be fine with that.
Well, we can give ten. We would take the other ten, the other five. Conseil LeBlanc? Counselor Legacy?
I just want to second what Jay F said. Thank you.
All right. Counselor Willet?
I'll go, I'll go back to that, yeah. We, we gotta support the kids, so.
So we go five and five?
The original five and five.
All right. Counselor Scary?
Uh, I, I feel that, you know, it, it definitely is a very worthwhile project. Um, I think maybe i- i- is it possible that we could base that on, on just further study into it? I mean, i- if everything rolls together to go for ten thousand dollars, I mean, again, I don't want to see any kids doing without food. Uh, it is a very worthwhile project for sure. Um, I'll go with the original. Yeah, I just talked myself into it.
Okay. Counselor Knowles?
I'll go back to the original, I guess.
All right. Deputy Mayor Anderson?
I wish that we could just give the money right to the kids. I'd be, I'd be so much more comfortable with, I would have zero problem writing a big old fat check and giving it right to the kids. Um, we need clarification on if I have my doubts that the tourism grant is going to qualify and we need clarification on that. I don't think it, I don't think it's going to qualify.
But if it doesn't, sorry, you could go back to five, right?
Yes.
We don't know. Okay, yeah.
Yeah. If it doesn't, then we give five.
But if, if I could write a check and say, here, Chico, give this, divvy this up between the schools and give it to the kids, I'd be more than happy to do that.
All right. Counselor Hondas? Going back and forth.
The thing with this area, what we can't, can't forget is that the kids, the schools have X amount of tickets. The money that they're going to raise is from the tickets that they sell. So if Parkwood Heights sells a hundred tickets, but Robertville sells two hundred tickets, well, it, that's the money that they get. They're not going to get nothing from the event itself, because I, if I can, they will get more if there's a profit.
Yeah.
Okay. So they're going to get their, their just due when they go out and they sell those tickets. So I'm still hesitant on the ten thousand dollars. So I'll stick to my guns. I'm not, not comfortable giving that kind of money, so.
Okay. Counselor Burnett?
Uh, same thing, six, I said, yeah.
Okay. LeBlanc, you already said. Branch, I think we've already talked about it, but one more time?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, if we're going that way, I'll revert back to the five or six thousand that we talked about. Again, I don't think regionally, Batters should always be doing all the heavy lifting regardless of what our partner communities are doing.
Okay. So Ms. Parker?
Okay, just summarize.
I've been trying, I've been trying. Let's confuse you.
So Batters Minor Hockey, six hundred dollars.
Yes.
Volleyball, Blue Panthers, nothing. The 2023 Poppy Campaign, five hundred. For the breakfast program, five thousand from tourism if possible and five thousand from the grant committee.
Yeah, there's grant, that's a yes. Yeah, okay. All right. Well, this ends our meeting. Thank you, everybody, and, uh, have yourself a great evening. Bonsoir à tous.